Good morning and welcome to the September the 11th, 2024 City Council Meeting. We're going to begin with the invocation from Councilman Wynn, followed by the pledge. Please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this City Council meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a council, and nurture the bonds of the community. Protect our first responders. Be with our city employees and our community on a daily basis. Help us to remember and pray for those we lost on this day from the events that unfolded in our past. All these things we pray in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We've got the minutes from June 24th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. R1. Kate.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning, Mr. Blue.
The first item, R1, is a request to, a request that the City Council consider adopting a resolution authorizing eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of an easement interest across the property owned by Heritage Property Development LLC, providing the necessity and public purpose for sanitary sewer system upgrades near Front Street as a part of the consent decree program.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions for Kate? I do have one card from Michael Tolbert. Michael, would you like to come up? Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please. And Senator, can you put the timer on three minutes?
That's some information that I'd like to share with you all. Is that okay?
Sure.
I'm here to request that R1 de-table and require the City of Tyler Water Utilities Department to negotiate in good faith and make a bona fide offer. In conversations with members of this body, I was told that my speaking here today may be an exercise in futility, and I hope that that is not the case, that you will listen and consider my request. The City Council is obligated to represent the citizens and hold government accountable. City has broad discretion and no obligation to respect the interests of private property owners. The only thing required by the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution is that they pay just compensation. Before you, I've shared a copy of a document that talks about the valuation of easements. And there's two different documents. And on page three of the first document, there's an easement valuation matrix. And if you look down in the 1-2-6 row, it talks about 11% to 25% percentage of fee for all rights water or sewer line. For easements that have a more severe impact on the surface, they're higher, ranging anywhere from 26% up to 100%. Okay? So that's the first document. That was written by Donnie Sherwood. He's, his designations are there. He's M.A.I. On the second document, it also talks about easement valuations. That was written by Donald Sherwood. And that chart that you saw in the first document is also included on the fourth page of the second document. And that is actually called the Sherwood Matrix, because it gives a good guide for determining the value, how an easement affects the value of property. So there are those for your review reference. What I've got here next is basically a timeline of events. I first learned about this easement in March of 2022. I happened to be on my property and saw surveyors, you know, on my property. So I went to ask them what they were working on, and he had a map, and he allowed me to take a picture of the map.
Your three minutes is up.
Okay. Can I proceed?
Y'all, anybody have any questions for Mr. Tolbert?
I didn't have page, the second page that you mentioned, page 2-3. This missed, page four is missing from my document.
Okay. Deborah, can you explain the procedure from at this point going forward, what occurs?
Yes, sir. With regard to eminent domain for local governments, we do an initial contact with the ownership of property, generally through land agents, primarily the City of Tyler property, private And you can do it several different ways, but based on what the local government requirements are, appraisal is the best process for the government to go about determining value. So that's what the City of Tyler does. And I believe in this case, we get an appraisal, yes, in this one, and that is normally what we do. Following the appraisal, we follow all of the requirements of the statute, which contacts the property owner and try to do negotiations with them. But if we can't reach a, what we think is a reasonable settlement based on the appraisal, then we have to come to the City Council in order to determine whether there is a desire to proceed with eminent domain proceedings. That's what this is. The Council will have the opportunity to hear both sides. If you do decide to move forward with eminent domain, we would have a vote on that, and then the process moves forward through the courts. That's primarily this.
So who determines the final amount? Appraisal, or is there another process where the final amount is?
Well, if you cannot get a settlement, it could go to courts, and the court, there's a process where the court will appoint, you know, a committee to handle the first part of that process. There are several parts of the process. If the settlement after the first part is accepted, then there's not a second court process trial, but there could be a second part, because your kind of difference has been broken.
The court will appoint three, what's called a special commissioners, and then they have a condemnation hearing, and both sides get to present what they believe the value is of the property, and then the commissioners set that valuation. And if one side's not happy with it, then they can appeal, and then it becomes a judicial proceeding. But he'll have his opportunity to present valuation and argument about what the value should be at the special commissioners hearing, if we vote to proceed with it.
Mr. Tolbert has that opportunity.
So Mr. Tolbert, your issue this morning is that you don't think that they're giving you enough funds for the property?
No, that's not the issue.
Okay, what is the issue?
The issue is that they have not negotiated in good faith. And if you'll allow me to just show you a couple of items on the appraisal, I can support that.
Go ahead.
Okay. And I showed you the timeline just to show that the city was aware of this process back in March of 2022. As I mentioned before, they resisted sharing any information with me. I know they went to the Attorney General to avoid sharing information. So finally, in, I think it was November of last year, they contacted me, and we started this process. If you go into the document, let's see. The appraisal.
We'll give you a little time, but we're not going to read above.
Right. Okay. I'll just hit a couple of highlights. They valued it at $143,002.20 per square foot. However, he valued the entire easement at the 25% reduction, when a portion of it is in the interior of the property and should be in the 75% to 100% range. So the basis for their offer is invalid, because it has invalid information.
But it doesn't sound like we're the ones that are going to be determining the final value.
All I'm asking you to do is to table this, to compel the city to negotiate in good faith. Look at the errors in their appraisal and negotiate in good faith.
Oh, and any opportunities for errors that you may believe that are there, or arguments against the appraisal that we've done, or his own appraisal that he wants to bring from a certified appraiser to that is done, yes, through that court proceedings. I think Tiffany and Kate may want to talk a little bit more kind of about just the process as per how we have kind of worked on this to kind of give clarity to it. The Council knows that y'all have done something similar with another condemnation recently that went through, and, you know, that property was able to kind of be worked out through the system that the state has established. And so, you know, we, especially on the consent decree work, this is kind of something that pops up now occasionally, but like I said, I think from Tiffany and Kate may want to have something.
Quick question. Mr. Tolbert, did you seek your own appraisal from a certified appraiser for the valuation of the property?
No. I mean, I did get an estimate on it, and it was a couple of thousand dollars, and we're only talking about, you know.
But it wasn't from a certified appraiser? Wasn't a certified appraisal?
The one that they had?
No, you.
No, I said I did not get that.
Okay. Thank you.
But I can see the obvious errors in it, and I am, you know, experienced with real estate.
All right. Thank you. Kate, Tiffany.
Good morning. I just, I would like to clarify that this is for the consent decree capacity group two work that we've been working on. Mr. Tolbert has reached out a few, on a few occasions, with public records requests, and we have responded to each of those requests with all of the information that was available at the time. The earlier requests were during preliminary design. We didn't have the alignment finalized at that time. As soon as the alignment was finalized, we have, we've shared the alignment with them. We've shared the general engineering design and thought process behind our alignment. Dixon Services has been at the primary point of contact, but I have personally invited Mr. Tolbert to meet with me so that we can explain the design face to face and why we are locating the line where it's at, and what we perceive as the impact to his property, that it does not diminish the value of the property, it actually enhances the value, because there will now be a private, a lateral line across the entire front of the property, which makes it more developable. But I have offered to meet multiple times face to face so that we could kind of hash that out a little bit more, and those offers have not been accepted.
Okay. Any questions for Tiffany? All right. This isn't a jury trial, or trial. Entertainer motion, one or the other.
Move to approve R1.
Second. Got a motion by Wynn, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, O1. Ed. You ready?
Good morning, Mayor Warren and City Council. We're here this morning to complete the final steps in the budget and tax rate adoption process. We presented this budget to you on August 14th and conducted our first public hearing on August 28th. This year's budget focuses on finding efficiencies, streamlining services, and investing heavily in capital projects to benefit all of Tyler. Before we move into the actions for today, I want to briefly review the proposed budget. The slide before you shows the key items of the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. They are grouped to show how the items tie to the city's strategic focuses. The proposed budget includes items to enhance public safety, increase the quality of life in our city, maintain and enhance our infrastructure, plan for future growth and development, and maintain our talented and experienced workforce. We are proposing a property tax rate of 24.0085 cents per hundred dollar valuation, down from 24.792 cents. Overall tax revenue will increase because of the continued growth in property values, contributing $30.5 million to the fiscal year 2025 general fund, 32% of the total budget for the general fund. This $1.7 million increase will support city services such as fire, police, streets and traffic operations, and our parks operations. We are proposing the following fees changes as part of the fiscal year 2025 budget. We are introducing a $50 commercial fire safety inspection fee to help businesses identify fire hazards and familiarize our firefighters with building layouts. Additionally, we propose restructuring the park special event permit fee from a flat $50 fee to a tiered system ranging from $50 to $300 based on the event scale. We are proposing a CPI increase of 4% to all of our solid waste rates. This will increase the residential waste collection by 91 cents. To support our $50 million investment in water and sewer improvements, we are proposing increasing the water base rate by $2.50 and the sewer base rate by $4.30 for most residential properties, with variable increases based on meter size. We will begin implementing Phase Three of the Uniform Volumetric Rate Conversion in 2025, ensuring that each gallon of water costs the same for every customer. The changes equate to an approximately $18.06 monthly increase for the average residential customer using 8,000 gallons of water. The regulatory compliance fee will remain unchanged at $19.70, covering the cost related to the EPA consent decree on the wastewater system. We thank you for the opportunity this morning to go over the highlights in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 programs and services. As you can see on the slide in front of you, we have three ordinances that we are asking and requesting the City Council to consider today. Before I ask Kedrick to come up and walk us through all these ordinances, I'll be happy to take on any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Brad? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kedrick.
Okay, Mayor and Council, as the manager said, we've got three items to approve. R1, we're actually going to do a public hearing, and then we're going to recommend that you adopt the budget by taking a record vote, and also approving the outside agency contracts, and then ratify the property tax increase that's in the budget. So having said that, if we could take R1 and go ahead and go through all three steps on R1.
All right. We will now open the floor for a public hearing on the city's proposed budget. Is there anyone here that wishes to come up and speak on this item? Come on up, Bob. Cassandra, can you do the timer for three minutes, please? Name and address for the record, please.
You're going to dox me, and somebody's going to get a bond for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Anyway, that's sort of what's going on Friday in our court, court system. Anyway, Bob Brewer, it's on the record, I wrote it down, 1800 E. Charles Tyler, Texas. Can I start now?
Sure.
Can we reset the time?
Cassandra, can you reset the time for Mr. Brewer?
Thank you. Now, I come here today on the training facility that we're going to have with the object that we all become better trained. I oppose a training facility that doesn't teach First Law. And the First Law is related to the reason why our flags are at half-staff today. Everybody thinks it's 9/11. It actually preceded today 249 years. It's to mark those patriots that died at Lexington and Concord. That is something that everybody in this body should know. Now, how it relates to training is the very first sentence of U.S. law is something that everybody needs to know. And those, of those laws, there's two of them that we had when we declared our independence. And those are creation and the Bible. No human law should be suffered to contradict these. So in this body and in that training center, I would really like to have the "In God We Trust" replaced or appended by the phrase, "No human laws should be suffered to contradict these." That is what our founders understood from the scholar most quoted, Sir William Blackstone. And it is, those are the laws, in fact, that allowed us to beat the baddest military ever on earth. So, and like with Michael Tolbert's question, if we know the First Laws that we will be taught with our Constitution and founding documents, and I didn't follow all these man's laws that were substantiating why you have to have this appraisal or that, but all I know, if there's a problem with the taking of property, there has to be a common law court with due process, with a trial by a jury of your peers, and that's not six people, that's 12. So anyway, I'm just hoping, now that Constitution Day will be next Tuesday, I'd really like to use your university here across the street to teach four hours worth of Constitution that you will remember forever, and will help the decisions that are made in this body. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Is there anyone else that wishes to come up and speak on?
No, second is left. This refers to laws of nature, not laws that help humans, or leads others to practice it.
All right. Anybody else wish to come up and speak on the budget? All right, seeing no one getting up, we are now going to close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
Motion, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 annual budget and authorize the city manager to execute particular outside agency contracts budgeted for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All right, we're going to have a roll call, a record vote from the council. Cassandra?
Mayor Pro Tim Haney.
Aye.
Councilmember McKeller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Curtis.
Aye.
Mayor Warren.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Also, on R1, is there a motion to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget?
I move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? Once again, we will have a record vote from the council. Cassandra?
Mayor Pro Tim Haney.
Aye.
Councilmember McKeller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Curtis.
Aye.
Mayor Warren.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is item O2, is actually the adoption of our tax rate.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this one as well.
All right, we will now open the floor for a public hearing on the city's request to adopt the proposed property tax rate. Anyone wish to come up and speak on this item? Only once? Only twice? All right, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 24.0085 cents, which is effective a 3.5% increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All right, once again, we will go to a record vote from the council. Cassandra?
Mayor Pro Tim Haney.
Aye.
Councilmember McKeller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Curtis.
Aye.
Mayor Warren.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is item O2, is actually the adoption of our tax rate.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this one as well.
All right, we will now open the floor for a public hearing on the city's request to adopt the proposed property tax rate. Anyone wish to come up and speak on this item? Only once? Only twice? All right, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 24.0085 cents, which is effective a 3.5% increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All right, once again, we will go to a record vote from the council. Cassandra?
Mayor Pro Tim Haney.
Aye.
Councilmember McKeller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Curtis.
Aye.
Mayor Warren.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the miscellaneous fee ordinance. City manager covered the different fees that were recommended. This year, there is a public hearing related to that because of the Building and Structure section that's required by state statute, so that's something a little bit new, but we would request that you all go into public hearing on this item.
All right, we will now open the floor for a public hearing on the city's proposed fee amendments, updates, and adjustments. Anyone wish to come up and speak on this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approved, O3.
Good, we'll need a second. Second. Got a motion by Nichols, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kedrick.
Just like to say, I appreciate you all's support throughout this process. This has been a fun budget to put together. Just kind of want to give a shout out to some of our staff members. Blake Kathy, Julie Goodgame, they really, really worked hard on this budget and made it what it is, and I just want them to know that I appreciate them, and I appreciate you all's support as well.
Great job. Thanks, Kedrick. Appreciate y'all. All right, M1, Kate.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This morning, item M1 is an award to award a construction contract for the South Side Wastewater Treatment Plant, Aeration Basin, and Final Clarifier Improvements. So the project scope for this includes improvements at the South Side Wastewater Treatment Plant, including improvements to the rehabilitation, improvements to the aeration basins, digestors, final clarifiers, sludge pump stations, and demolition of the existing caustic system and construction of a new electrical building. Sealed bids were open and read aloud on July 23rd, 2024. We received two bids. The, after review of the bids, the apparent low bidder was notified, we notified Drake Heavy Contractors, formerly known as Heritage Construction LLC, that their bid was disqualified due to poor performance in the execution of work under a previous contract for the City of Tyler. So therefore, I'm recommending that we award this contract to the second low bidder, Graycon Construction.
Any questions for Kate?
I had two, I only have one now. One question was going to be why the other bid instead of not the low bid. So that answered that. Thank you for that, Kate. And then with all this work that's going to take place out there, will this help some of the owner issues that people, you know, call and complain about and ask us questions about? Will this help alleviate some of those problems?
The structures that are going to be working on, there will not be any technically The, the structures that are going to be working on, there will not be any technically, technical improvements to odor control. However, what with the improvements, the odor will be controlled better by improving and rehabilitating these processes.
Thank you.
We, Kate, were you surprised that there weren't more bidders than that for this significant project?
It is. Honestly, though, treatment plant work is fairly specialized. There aren't that many at this price, I think, that we would get here in Tyler right now.
Any other questions for Kate?
I need to. Move to approve, M. 1.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M. 2.
Okay, the next item, M. 2, is TWU's Capital Improvements Plan Prioritization Project. So our Tyler Water Utilities CIP program, our mission is to protect the health, safety, and environment, meet customer needs, and planning for future needs with our projects. The drivers behind these are regulatory compliance, growth, and maintenance of our system. In fiscal year 2024, Tyler Water Utilities engineers ran 35 projects, and categories included collection system, distribution system, water treatment, and wastewater treatment plants, Lake Tyler, and the dams. This CIP model that we're proposing to use will help us to make data-driven decisions regarding prioritization of these projects. So this is how the, the model works. In HDR, they've developed a model called ECON H2O, which is what we will be utilizing. The workflow process pretty much goes where we'll be able to use this all the time in developing new projects. And so we'll identify the project, confirm the project list, we'll perform some initial scoring, prioritize the projects, confirm funding with finance, and then update that CIP. The ECON H2O model is a multi-criteria decision-making tool, or MBCA, Project Prioritization Interface. There are modules that include inputting the prioritization criteria, criteria weighting, scoring projects, and then you are, then you develop a ranked inventory of the projects for the system. You optimize that project sequencing. There will be a dashboard where we will be able to show what projects and when, and it's visually, you can see it. It also allows for scenario analysis using different funding sources. So overall, it'll make it so we are able to really be using data-driven decisions from, or data-driven decisions based on those master plans that we've had in the past, regulatory compliance issues that have come along, and so forth. So this will have an output of project scheduling, funding source use, and cash flow based on the modeled inputs. And we're excited about getting this done, so it's going to move with a number, every month coming up, there's going, there's a milestone in the project. So first, we'll do the initial project management all the way till April 2024, where we will be trained to use it. It will be an Excel model that we have, that the city has, that we will not be reliant upon HDR to update for us. So we're very excited about this, this project. So I'm recommending that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract in the amount of $49,850 with HDR for the Tyler Water Utilities Capital Improvement, Improvements Plan Prioritization Project.
Any questions for Kate?
So Kate, so this, this is something you're purchasing from them? Will put this plan, give us an annual fee?
No. No, they'll, they'll work through the initial setup with us. They'll train us so we know how to do, how to, how to modify things, and then it will be ours.
Any other questions for Kate?
Move to approve, M. 2.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kate. All right, down to board deployments. Cassandra?
We didn't change. Sorry. Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Council.
She's going to.
Thank you. Annual on August 31st, approximately one-half of the terms of the city board members expire. Some board members are eligible for reappointment. Other members have served the maximum number of years and are ineligible for reappointment, and others do not wish to serve, thereby creating a vacancy. Pursuant to City Code Section 1-20C, the city has solicited applicant, applicants for board membership, and all board applications were submitted to City Council, which conducted a preliminary review and discussion at a City Council Board and Commission's Training Work Session held Wednesday, August 14th and August 28th, 2024, at City Hall. Recommendations were provided to the City Council, and after all board qualifications have been reviewed for each applicant, the following city boards are now being submitted for the City Council's final approval, as shown in the city clerk's exhibit located in front of you this morning. So per, per City Code Section 1-20C, the City Council retains final discretion and authority to appoint or reappoint any board member. So at this time, I'm requesting that the City Council consider approving the recommendations for appointment and reappointments of members to the various city boards.
Any questions for Cassandra?
Cassandra, are we short members on some boards that hopefully some citizens that may be listening or here might want to apply for?
Yes, sir. The boards that we still need to fill is Animal Care Advisory Board, the Disabilities Issues Review Board, and we need an attorney on the Historical Preservation Board. And we're also, we'll bring back the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I think a motion to approve presented list of names for our board commission appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wow, everybody froze up. Got a motion by Nichols, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Cassandra, if people want to see if they're, can they contact your office?
Yes, they can also have a packet here if they need one today.
Okay. All right, we are down to the consent agenda. Mr. Brewer, you've got your card down there for access, CA2, but you spoke during the budget, good? Okay, but you, you, you've done that. Okay. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. Does anything will be polled or approved as presented?
Move to approve the consent agenda is written.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Mayor and Council, a few things of note. The first of one, and Ashley Taylor is back there, so brag about something that has been done at the library. Our Tyler Public Library staff have been working towards improving access to and preserve preservation of historical information through digitization. One such project includes reviewing and digitizing the map collections and other larger documents within the, within the local and family history section. Our reference associate, TJ Rankin, took on this project, scanning maps and other documents. One such map includes a map of the 19, of the 1856 depicting the original town of Tyler. To date, TJ's project has scanned 1,642 documents. TJ's done a tremendous job overseeing this project by ensuring a thorough review of each piece within our collection and taking careful time and consideration selecting what materials are being scanned. The city librarian, Ashley Taylor, assessed the final review of items not chosen for digitalization. So a big thank you and kudos to TJ for seeing this project through and preserving our history. Some, a couple of other items, the East Texas State Fair is about to open soon, and we've had a recent meeting with the Tyler ISD, the East Texas State Fair Representatives, and Smith County Sheriff's Department to talk about just kind of the proximity to Dixie Elementary and how the traffic flow was going to work, and what protections there were to make sure for Dixie Elementary, with the fair being there across the street from them, how that was going to happen. The East Texas State Fair is doing a great job this year of being able to do traffic coordination and of reviews and background checks on the people who come in to help kind of operate the fair and the carnivals. And as well, they were able to kind of work with Tyler ISD on any concerns they may have. The fair won't be open during the daytime hours on that Monday through Thursday, so that'll help a lot with easing traffic over there as well. And then on Fridays, kind of most of the time, the fair will be open. The largest amount of operations will be after the school hours. So we're looking forward to that, being able to work well together for this year. And then finally, our own Tyler mayor, Don Warren, and then Longview's mayor, are holding a friendly peanut butter competition this month as part of Hunger Action Month. This is to help fill the shelves of our pantries here in our both Tyler and Longview, but we know that the city of Tyler will once again dominate over Longview and destroy them. You know, there is such a thing as a friendly competition. Jars will be collected this month through September 27th in East Texas Food Bank barrel, food barrels at Brookshire's Super 1 Foods and Fresh locations of both Tyler and Longview. Donors can also buy jars of peanut butter online at easttexasfoodbank.org. As the mayor has stated, life can get sticky, and sometimes you need a helping hand. Let's support each other as East Texans and spread generosity as smoothly as we spread peanut butter.
Thank you for that plug, and I will let you all know that at Brookshire's, there's actually a sale on Skippy peanut butter. You can buy one, you get another for a penny. So I do expect my friends and colleagues to go out and purchase peanut butter.
Where do we, where do you bring it from?
There's 12 Brookshire's stores in Tyler and Longview. They'll have two barrels, you'll be able to just put there, East Texas Food Bank barrels. All the, all the peanut butter is going to the food bank, so thank y'all in advance for helping Tyler win. All right, anything else for the city manager?
May I say something? Sure, put it in. Thank you. First, I don't want to embarrass her, but I want to make note, and I want the council to know about the great work that Ms. Cassie, our clerk, is doing. And I call on her all the time, and usually it's on the weekends or on holidays, and she is herself a service. She just jumps right in there and makes things happen for me, so I want the council to know that. So I want to say openly, thank you to our clerk. And I'm so sorry I have to call you so much, I have to hours. The great work that you do. Also want to make mention that we have 500 top ladies of distinction in our city. I want to thank our police chief and his staff for helping us to maneuver throughout the city. Thank you, chief. We had about four officers to help us all around Tyler, so the hospitality was amazing. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you for a great weekend, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anything else? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn. So.